We are at full strength. It is the it is the twentieth of April, 2021, and this is the Clayton City Council meeting. And we are going to have now Janet call the rule, please.
Uh, Councilmember Diaz.
Yes, I can hardly hear you.
Okay, Councilmember Tillman.
I'm present.
Okay, Councilmember Juan.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cloven.
Here.
And Mayor Wolf.
I am here. In fact, we're all here. So welcome back to Councilmember Juan. We're all at full strength now. And we are now going to watch the meeting protocol video.
Maybe.
Or not.
Yeah.
Janet will act it out.
I seem to be having camera problems and my screen is kind of grayed out right now. And I have a spinning blue circle.
Well, suffice it. Go ahead, Rena. You want to say something?
I may have to take over because that probably means her Zoom is going to die because that's the problem that I was having. So I, I think we may need to skip the video unless Janet, you can get it to play, but I doubt you can.
So we skipped the video.
We're gonna skip the video.
Just suffice it to say that we are under the government rules of being able to do this meeting on Zoom. Is there anything else that we have to say except that the raising of your hand? If you want to participate, you raise your hand in the raise your hand feature down below.
Or hit star nine.
Or hit star nine. Jenna, I think Jenna, you know the whole thing by heart. Can you recite it?
Um, not really, but the chat feature is not enabled and just know that you are in a Zoom meeting that is being recorded. So just be mindful.
Okay, we shall be. And thank you very much. All right. So now we'll move on to item number three, Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Diaz.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Diaz. Moving on now to item number four, which is our consent calendar. Does anybody have anything that they would like to pull or talk about? Excuse me.
Uh, you were all, oh.
I'm sorry?
Janet, do you want to go or do you want me to cover it?
I'll let you cover it.
All right, um, council members, you were emailed a page that was inadvertently left out of item four G, I believe, the 2019-20 Trails and Landscape Committee Report. It was emailed to you and it was posted to the website. It was just the, the last page of the, the report. So the full item will be as part of the packet that gets adopted and that has been made available to everyone as well. So apologize for that. But any motion, if there's a motion to approve that item would include approving it in its corrected form.
Does anybody else have any? Yes, I see Holly.
I just have a question. On item four D, I don't necessarily need to pull it from the vote. I just wanted to ask a question. So when is it appropriate to ask that?
Please?
No, no.
Okay, great. So I just had a quick question about the contract for the new city engineer. Yes. I noticed that all of his credentials were from Southern California. Will he be based locally or will he be remote?
Um, he will be remote, but coming here as needed. So he's already been here and done some touring and looking at projects as well. Although we identify one single person as quote unquote, the city engineer. It's really a team effort at Harris and there are a number of the folks on the Harris team who are local to the Concord office. So we have a combination of ways to meet that, meet that need locally.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you. And how often is he coming up? You said it's as needed, but how many times has he been here? Just out of curiosity.
Well, in the couple of weeks he's been on board. He's been up here once, I think, so far.
Okay, great. Thank you. That was all I had.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, and we'll move on to the public. Anybody in the public want to pull anything to talk about our consent calendar? Excuse me. Janet, do we have anybody in the queue?
Unfortunately, Mayor Wolf, I cannot see because my screen is grayed out and blue circles still spin. So I'll, I'll be needing the assistance of our city manager this evening.
Absolutely. I am happy to stand in on that mode and we do not have any hands raised at this time.
Okay, then we'll bring it back for a motion. Anybody have a motion to for our consent calendar? Yes, Peter.
I'm moved.
First by Cloven. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Tillman. And now Janet, would you call the vote, please?
Absolutely. Councilmember Diaz.
Yes.
Councilmember Tillman.
Yes.
Councilmember Juan.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cloven.
Yes.
Mayor Wolf.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's approved. Okay, now we'll move on to recognitions and presentations. We got a lot of those tonight. It's gonna be a fun night. And so first of all, we have our do the right thing, character trait of courage for the month of April. Our certificates of recognition to our public school students. And do we have our principals in attendance? They told me they would be here to introduce their winning students for April. I see Kitty Sanchez's dog. Oh, there she is. Okay, in the car car. You're on mute, Ms. Sanchez.
Um, I'm sorry, I'm coming from baseball, but Rory's teacher, Taylor Passard, is in the waiting room. And she is actually gonna present it to Rory and our other student got stuck playing baseball. So she will not be able to make it. So I do apologize for that. We just found out the game went late. So, but Rory and Taylor, Taylor Passard is the teacher.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. You are excused. And we have the teacher with us. Would you say your name again, please? Because you're under Katie's name there.
Um, hi, I'm Taylor Passard, his first grade teacher.
Terrific. So tell us all about Rory.
I chose Rory because for this month's courage character trait, because after over a year of distance learning and learning online, he was a little bit nervous to start our hybrid in person. And so his parents let me know that he was feeling a little bit nervous and a little bit shy to meet me in person and to meet his classmates in person. So I was expecting that when we started, but then when he came to the classroom that first day, he didn't let that stop him, his nervousness, and he made friends right away and he was having fun right away. And even after a few days, he was even brave enough to teach the class a certain game that he knew. And then one day he brought a story to read and I have a little stage in my classroom. And he stood on the stage and he read his story to the whole class. And he was so brave and I was so proud of him. So that's why I nominated, there's Rory, now I can see him. Rory for this month of courage. He did an awesome job.
Oh, congratulations Rory. It's fantastic. You got to, you're gonna have to teach us all that game one day.
Okay.
All right. Congratulations. A man of courage. That's great. Very good. And we'll make sure we get your certificate to your teacher to get to you. And we also have one more, is that right?
Um, no, I do apologize. She is not going to be able to attend. She got stuck in baseball.
She got stuck in baseball. Okay.
And I believe her dad is the coach, so there was no getting out of it.
You have anything you want to tell us about?
Um, I, I do, I don't want to do her a disservice by not having her present, but I do know that very similarly to Mr. Rory, you know, a lot of our kids had a lot of apprehension coming back to campus, not really knowing what it was gonna look like. And Ms. Knapp is the second grade teacher. And I do know that Ms. Knapp really just felt that the student, you know, exceeded expectations with just being brave and coming into campus and coming into class. So we're really proud of all of our students and these two just kind of stood out for us.
Fantastic. Well, thank you, Ms. Sanchez. Congratulations to both of our elementary students. And I see that our our Diablo View Middle School Principal, Mr. Fong, is here to introduce his two winners for today.
Let me see. I see Ms. Tornberg. And do we have Ms. Pritchard? Is that the other blank box? Oh, all right. I have my two students. Great. So good evening, Mayor Wolf, Vice Mayor Cloven, and esteemed city council members. Tonight's my extreme honor to introduce to you two incredible young ladies. I have Miss Sophia Pritchard and Miss Hannah Tornberg. First, let me start off by just saying they are both exemplary students and model citizens, but tonight they're here to be recognized for the trait of courage. All of our students at Diablo View this year have exhibited the trait of courage in conquering their fears and anxieties around coming back to school after a year of quarantine and during an historic pandemic. It's not easy to face our fears. It takes bravery and courage. Adults and kids alike have, have all struggled over this past year. So these two ladies in front of you on Zoom are examples to us all. They've overcome their fears as well as other personal obstacles. And with that, they've exemplified the trait of courage. And for that, we're recognizing them as our school's representatives for our Do the Right Thing program. So that is Miss Hannah Tornberg and Sophia Pritchard.
Congratulations. And, and that's Sophia there in the, in the Pritchard square, I see. But where's, where is, where's Sophia today?
Oh. I shouldn't be there.
Well, it's anyway, it's, it's great to see you.
Her mom and I are very proud. We're very proud of Sophia and our daughter CNN. Good girls. We have great girls.
Fantastic. And, and I see that Hannah, you're there. Hannah?
Hi.
Hi. Welcome to the city council. Congratulations on your, on your win for courage. And it's great. It's great to have you with us today. And we want to thank all of our winners. And we'll be sure and put your name in the paper. So make sure you look for that and we'll get you your certificates.
Oh, wow.
And Derek, we'll get you one too.
So I'm very sorry. I don't know how this happened.
Mr. Mayor, if I may just ask, could there, could your daughter, Mr. Pritchard, be logged in under another name?
Maybe under Teresa Curry.
Okay, that was a hand that was up. And so I wasn't sure. So I'm going to now quickly bring her in. Last name wasn't the same, so I didn't know. And so now there. Excellent.
You're on, Sophia.
There she is.
Hi there. You made it. Let's, I think she, I think she's shocked. But it's good to see you. Congratulations on your win for courage this month in April. And like I was, I was telling Hannah that we'll get you your certificate very soon. So congratulations to all of our winners. Hey, hey, very good. Now next, next month, May, that'll be our, our last for this part of the school year. And in May, we are going for responsibility. So keep that in mind, all you students out there that are, are watching tonight. And we'll look forward to seeing who wins in May for responsibility. So thank you very much. And thank you to our principals as well.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And we'll move on. Now we have our proclamation now. We have several proclamations for the month of April. And I believe we're gonna have these pretty much going forward for the rest of the year now till we get through all of our various cultural heritage months and weeks and days. So this one is declaring April as Autism Acceptance Month. And I'm gonna paraphrase some of these because they're very long. But whereas each year, people across the globe take time to recognize the millions of people living with autism spectrum disorder and whereas autism spectrum disorder is pervasive developmental disorder affecting the social communication and behavioral skills of those affected by it. And whereas one in sixty-eight American children are diagnosed on the autism spectrum. And this number has increased over time as identification methods have improved. Now therefore, ICW Wolf, Mayor of the City of Clayton, on behalf of the entire Clayton City Council proclaim April as Autism Acceptance Month in Clayton, California. And I call this observance to the attention of all of our citizens as a symbol of our commitment to creating a culture of disability awareness and inclusion for all members of our community. And we also have, our next proclamation is for Arab American Heritage Month. Excuse me. All right. Whereas for over a century, Arab Americans have been making valuable contributions to virtually every aspect of American society. In medicine, law, business, technology, government, culture, and whereas since migrating to America, men and women of Arab descent have shared their rich culture and traditions with neighbors and friends, while also setting fine examples of being model citizens and public servants, bringing their resilient family values, strong work ethic, dedication to education and diversity and faith and creed that have added strength to our great democracy. And whereas Arab Americans have also enriched our society by sharing in the entrepreneurial American spirit that makes our nation free and prosperous. And whereas the history of Arab Americans and US history remains neglected or defaced by misconceptions, bigotry, and anti-Arab hate in the forms of crime and speech. And whereas Arab American issues such as civil rights abuses, harmful stereotyping and bullying must be combated in the forms of education and awareness. As Arab Americans join all Americans in the desire to see a peaceful and diverse society, where every individual is treated equally and feels safe. Whereas the incredible contributions and heritage of Arab Americans have helped build, help us build a better nation. Therefore, I, CW Wolf, Mayor of the City of Clayton, hereby proclaim April as National Arab American Heritage Month in Clayton and encourage all residents to join us in the special observance celebrating the contributions Arab Americans have made to our society. All right. Moving on now to Earth Day. Declaring April twenty-second, which is coming up on Thursday, as Earth Day. Whereas our children and future generations hope for a world with a stable human population that sustains all life on earth. And whereas we desire diversity among animals, birds, sea life, flora and fauna that is equal to or greater than what exists today. And whereas we deserve a world powered by energy that does not require the use of finite natural resources and does not create radioactive or toxic waste. And whereas we ask world societies to commit to long-term development practices fully acknowledging future generations as the natural world of tomorrow. Now therefore, I, CW Wolf, Mayor of the City of Clayton, hereby proclaim April twenty-second as Earth Day. And as the citizens of Clayton to pledge to review their lifestyles and consider the habits and ways in which they may cause undue harm to the earth. And in every deliberation, consider the impact on future generations. Alrighty. All right. Oh, we have Law Day. That's right. We have Law Day now. Make this quick on Law Day, declaring May first as Law Day. Whereas throughout the world, the rule of law is central to the promise of a safe, free and just society. Respect for and adherence to the rule of law is the premise upon which the United States was founded. Whereas Americans' commitment to this fundamental principle sustains our democracy. It guides our progress, helps to endure all people and receive fair treatment and protects our government of, by, and for the people. Now therefore, I, CW Wolf, Mayor of the City of Clayton, hereby proclaim May first each year as Law Day in Clayton, California. And call on all public officials to display the flag of the United States on all government buildings on Law Day. And encourage all residents to acknowledge the importance of our nation's legal and judicial systems with appropriate ceremonies and activities. All right. And our final one. Our final one is for our former mayor Julie K. Pierce. Is she with us today? Is she in the audience? Can we bring her in? I have a proclamation here. We'll see if we can get her to pop on in. I'll read the proclamation. I see she's coming in there on mute. So Julie, welcome. We have a proclamation for you to declare your birthday, by the way, April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one, as Julie K. Pierce Day. I have a thirty-three-page proclamation here.
No, that's the number of years, CW. It's not thirty.
Oh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna paraphrase this down. We will send you the entire Bible of it, the, the giant booklet. But I'm gonna paraphrase this down for you here. And so I want to read this especially to you. Whereas Julie K. Pierce has honorably and admirably served the City of Clayton as a duly elected council member from December ninety, nineteen ninety-two to December twenty twenty, including six times as mayor. And whereas prior to serving on the city council, Julie served on the Clayton Planning Commission from June nineteen eighty-seven to December nineteen ninety-two, including as its chair. And whereas Julie currently holds the record for the longest-serving Clayton official and most times as mayor. And one of the longest-serving public officials in Contra Costa and Bay Area. And whereas Julie worked on transportation, land use and growth management politi, policy issues for over thirty-three years advocating regional cooperation while retaining local control, including Contra Costa Transportation Authority Board, four years as its chair. Transpac, Contra Costa Mayor's Conference Appointing to the Association of Bay Area Governments, serving four years as president and representative to the Metropolitan Transportation Commission. Past president of the California Council of Governments, Executive Board of the National Association of Regional Councils. And whereas Julie's leadership was recognized by the Contra Costa Council in nineteen ninety-five, adoption of Contra Costa's first countywide comprehensive transportation plan. Selected as Woman of the Year in nineteen ninety-eight by San Francisco Chapter. Four years as Chair of Contra Costa, shaping our future policy committee, which established the urban limit line consensus. And whereas Julie actively worked for many years to provide for the betterment of Clayton, including reviewing and approving most all residential neighborhoods since nineteen eighty-seven. Also the Clayton Library, Endeavor Hall, City Hall, Clayton Community Gym, and Diablo View Middle School. Clayton Community Park, Oakhurst and its open space, The Grove Park, and extending the city trail system. An active member of the Clayton Business and Community Association and the Clayton Historical Society Museum. And whereas her experience and steady leadership has been an asset not only to the City of Clayton, but to Contra Costa County and our Bay Area region at large. And in each of these roles, Julie Pierce has provided her hard work and dedication to good governance at all levels of government and thoughtful planning for the future of our community. Now therefore, ICW Wolf is Mayor of the City of Clayton, on behalf of a grateful city council and community, do hereby recognize and honor Julie K. Pierce and deeply thank her for many years of service to the Clayton community and hereby proclaim Wednesday, April twenty-eighth, unless it's passed already, because this is very long, April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one, which is her birthday as Julie K. Pierce Day in the City of Clayton, California, USA. So congratulations, Julie. I will make sure that you get the full-blown version of this thing. And on a personal level, I just, I just want to thank you for your toolage and your ongoing mentorship. I appreciate very much being able to turn to you for your advice and your expertise. And, you know, I've always said it's, it's nearly impossible to follow the headliner. But having you in my corner has been a true blessing. So I just want personally, thank you. And before you speak, I'm gonna open it up to any council members that might want to add on to, to this for Julie. Yes.
Holly Tillman. Before, when you were retiring, which was the first night that I was sworn in, that I'm bummed that we didn't get to serve together. And thank you for everything that you've done for our city.
Thank you, Holly. And I won't force all of you to, to say anything. I just want to say thank you for this incredible honor. And that we certainly saw many, many beneficial changes to Clayton over the last thirty-three years. I am extremely proud of all the improvements that we've been able to add to our community by working collaboratively together. You know, Clayton Station and Oakhurst and so many other projects that we worked on brought so many amenities and infrastructure improvements and and other things to our community that have become part of the heart and soul. I mean, certainly The Grove Park is, is the heart and soul of this community at this point. So you know, I feel incredibly honored to have been able to, to work on all of those things in the city during such exciting times. And I want to earnestly wish you all well and ask that you continue working collaboratively together to continue adding to the amenities that this wonderful community so much deserves. And anytime I can be a resource, I'm here. So happy to, happy to help out anytime. But you know what? I don't miss a lot of it. So I'm, I'm happy to help.
What do you mean? What do you mean, Julie?
Let's just say Nextdoor and I don't have a relationship anymore and I don't miss that at all. So yeah, it's, it's unfortunate that things have been so ugly over the past few years, but I'm hoping that this council can rise above that and, and turn things around and start working very well together again. So I'm very hopeful for that. So thank you all. I really appreciate the honor and I'm here anytime I can help out with some of the history.
And you know, due to the COVID restrictions, Julie, we're not gonna be able to have the parade.
No.
No, I mean the parade on your, on your day.
Oh, on my birthday? That's okay. That's okay. That works. And you know, I will miss working on the Fourth of July parade this year, but, and the concerts and all of that, but we'll get back to it when it's the right time.
I'll look forward to it. But thank you and congratulations. We'll look forward to your, your big day on Wednesday.
Thank you so much. I will enjoy it. You can, I can trust you. I will, I will enjoy that. So thank you much.
All right. So I think that takes care of all of our proclamations, recognitions, and presentations today. Oh, I see Mr. Diaz. Yes, Councilman Diaz.
Yeah, speaking of Proclamation Central, we missed one in March. That was Caesar Chavez Day, which the county, interestingly enough, recognized on Karen Mitchell's most recent blurb she sent off. That was March thirty-first. So I've noted that to Rena and that that would be hopefully included sometime in the future. As also for May, on the fifteenth of May, which is National Peace Officer Memorial Day. We need to make sure that doesn't go to look at. He's assured me that that one is also in, in process. One final one that we need to, I think, make note of for June. We ought to have Howard Geller Day. He's gonna have a birthday that's very monumental that year. And I'm not gonna tell you what it is. But he needs to be recognized as well. So let's don't forget Howard. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and April, we will discuss again next year is, and we should probably bring it up, that it is Earthquake Preparedness Month. So those of you that are out there, make sure you get ready in case the big one happens. Have your kit and your, and your plan with your family. All right. So that takes care of all of our proclamations, recognitions, and presentations. So we're gonna move on now to our reports. Planning Commission did not have a meeting Trails and Landscape Committee held on April twelfth. Do we have?
Yes, hello, Mayor Wolf.
Oh, there you are.
I, committee or, or council and staff.
I committee or, or council and staff. Yeah, the TLC, the Trails Landscape Committee met on Monday, April twelfth, and all members were present, but no public attended. The committee reviewed the Landscape Maintenance District Staff Activity Report from February first through April second, twenty twenty-one. Also, the status of the Landscape Maintenance District Projects, which included the completion of the Main Street Downtown Planner Box, some various repairs, and notice of continued delays on other, other projects due to staffing limitations, which includes only having four of the regular number of eight seasonal staff members we learn from, from the staff. And then we reviewed the Landscape Maintenance District's revenue and expenses from July first, twenty twenty, through March thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Then the Trails Landscape Committee Ad Hoc Committee members presented their annual reports of the Measure Eight's funds for the Landscape Maintenance District for fiscal years twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, and twenty nineteen to twenty. The entire committee reviewed and made some minor changes and unanimously approved the reports to be forwarded to the city council for acceptance and filing tonight. And both these, both of these documents, oh yeah, both of these documents are on the city council's consent calendar tonight and, and adopted. The committee members and staff also noted that the Contra Costa Water District will likely announce water restrictions or water reductions in response to the low rainfall and approaching drought conditions. And the next Trails Landscape Committee meeting will be held in May at a date and time that's not determined yet. And topics for that meeting will include the drought water management plan, discussion of weed, weed management, and the review of the draft proposal budget for the Landscape Maintenance District fiscal year twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-two. And that is my report.
Thank you. Justin, anybody have any questions for Justin? Comments or anything? Nope. Okay. Thank you, Justin. We appreciate your work. All right, and city manager and staff report.
And find that mute button. Mayor, members of the council, I don't have anything in particular to announce for, for this evening. Although I will say, I know that the next few council meetings between now and the end of the fiscal year, so through our planned June fifteenth meeting, will be very busy. We have a lot of items coming forward. So just be aware of that as we're trying to get all of those juggled and scheduled in. So thank you for that.
Right. Anybody have any questions? Right. We shall move on to our city council reports. Jeff, do you have anything? I know you were off, but.
I was on vacation for almost two weeks. I went to Utah. It was fantastic. The national parks are great. You should go. I got my first round of the COVID shot. I suggest, if you have a chance, go nuts. It felt like I got hit in the arm with this blood hammer. That's it.
Yeah, I understand that. I got my second one coming up on Thursday, and they say that's, that's worse than the first one. So hard to sleep on your arm after that. Okay, let's go to, let's go round board. How about Holly?
Thank you. Wasn't quite as busy as the last meeting. I had a couple of meetings with our city manager, met with several constituents regarding various things going on around the city, in particular, trying to work with Cheryl Willis, as I mentioned, for a few months now on a best look, the best location for the Little Free Anti-Racist Library. I attended on April tenth, along with you, Mayor Wolf, and Vice Mayor Cloven, the Stop the Hate Rally, which was a way for us to hear from our Asian-American residents on issues that were happening with them and from visiting people as well, just to hear how we can be out, better allies for them in our community. And it was a great, even though it was a small crowd, probably about fifty-plus people. It was nice to be able to hear people in support. And in relation to that, as I mentioned several times already, we're going to have our Clayton Speaks forum that we've opened up not only to Clayton residents, but to everyone in the Bay Area. We've got a great list of panelists from professors that study in Asian-American studies that will be listed, and that's on next Wednesday, April twenty-eighth, at six thirty PM, if people want to tune in. And it's, if you have stories to share that are positive, we want to hear them. If you have ones that are negative, we want to know how we can be better allies. So I encourage everybody to join that if you can. What else? That is about it.
Okay, so Clayton Speaks is taking place on Julie K Pierce Day.
Yes.
Okay, good. What time is that?
It's at six thirty, so it does actually coincide with the State of the Union address. But, you know, I have a DVR, so.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Tillman. Councilmember Diaz?
Thank you. A number of meetings with the city manager and Chief of Police. Probably the most notable thing that, again, I was able, very honored to participate in was the COVID nineteen vaccination event out in Brentwood at the Los Madonnas College on Saturday, the seventeenth. That event was led by Ross McGumber, who is the Chief of Operations for East County Fire, but also represented were the Sheriff's Department and Captain Tori Cornbloom, as well as the Health Services Representative, Megan Jones, who led the effort. We vaccinated four hundred and ninety people. And I'm fully vaccinated, so I, I, I can attest. And by the way, don't worry about the second one. If they tell you it's worse, it's not really. I worked directly with a representative from the Contra Costa Fire Protection District, Jim Phalen, who's a fire inspector. Our job was monitoring the thirty-minute observation center. We had two, one for fifteen and one for thirty minutes. It was just based upon their potential reaction to the, to the vaccinations. But the fact is, the county is leading the effort. We're going to get as many people as we can vaccinated so we can get back close to normal as possible. Also been working with Sergeant Jason Shaw, trying to inventory all of the Clayton CERT gear that we have and getting that back on track. We may need that at some point in the future. We are moderately equipped with emergency gear, both at the City Hall corp yard, as well as Station Eleven, which we were there this morning, inventorying that, that material. But that process is moving along very, very smartly. And the question is going to be, can we get enough volunteers to resurrect the, the Clayton CERT? We had Rich Veal, who's a local member and former CERT member, as well as a CERT instructor. And he was participating in that, but can't thank Jason enough with helping coordinate all of this and getting that moving forward. Had a number of meetings with our citizens, and they're very interested in what's taking place in, in our community and look forward to working with them on issues as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Just a quick question with regard to the CERT program. When do you foresee the call going out for volunteers and, and how many would you need then?
Well, very, we need, we need a team of at least a dozen, I would say. I'm, in fact, I think I'm the only one left that's certified to be CERT, qualified on the city council, number one. And we have no person at the leadership level, at the volunteer level. We had a gentleman by the name of Pat Sullivan that was very active, but has gotten involved in other things. We do have two former leaders, both Herb Young and Rich Veal, who was out there. But that has to go out. I'm getting, I want to make sure we have everything lined up before we actually put the call out for people. But they're going to have to go through the CERT training. Right now, because of the current situation, there are at least, I don't know, thirty-plus hours of classroom training. But the big event is the graduation function, which is the last day. It's a full Saturday where you actually do everything that, that's required in case of an emergency. And that's been on hold because of the current situation, and that's why we need to get that back on track. And I don't know if there's still some people out there in our community that are interested in that, but we're going to, we're going to make that a priority for, for the next year. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll look forward to getting the word out on that, getting some volunteers. Okay, and Vice Mayor Cloven?
Greetings. I did join with you all at the Rise Up Against Asian Hate in The Grove. You know, for me, it's about continuing the conversation dialogue and just being aware of racism and, and being aware that it exists and being able to have, be able to address it. We, we say our city motto is do the right thing. And that includes kindness and respect, inclusion, encourage responsibility and self-discipline. Those pillars are mean something, and that's what we, we, we espouse to be. And this is a great demonstration of, of living those values. On April twelfth, I, as a member of the Contra Costa County Heads Materials Commission, I attended the County Supervisors Meeting, which is the Committee on Transportation, Water, and Infrastructure. And there was a lot of conversation about the funding from Washington County Biking Trails, Seaway, where a lot rise. But one of the items was directly related to what we talked about or what's on the consent calendar tonight, associated with unfunded mandates related to stormwater and how that affects us from a budgetary standpoint. There, the AB three seventy-seven is the Clean Water, California Clean Water Act. And it's been put out there by Assembly Member Rivas, who wants to enforce more enforcement rather than good compliance etiquette in City of California. And again, what that means, we have to do things the state wants us to do that there's no money to do for. And, and we don't have the ability to tax ourselves to pay for the additional efforts that are required. It's, it's asinine, just like Sacramento comes to us and tries to make us do things we don't want to from a housing standpoint. They are constantly trying to be cutting edge from an environmental standpoint and put unfunded mandates on municipalities. And even though I have an environmental consulting firm and I actually make a living doing compliance audits and things like that, it's, I sternly object to what Sacramento is doing in this fact, and I agree with the county commissioners who basically are opposing AB three seventy-seven, the California Clean Water Act. I really enjoyed the April twelfth Trails and Landscaping Committee. It's, most of the members in that committee are brand new. They're just stepping in the division and getting their feet wet. And for them to go back and retroactively put together and approve two annual reports and put that for review, I, I laud their efforts and their, their time they put into doing so. The conversation is robust. They are truly ambassadors and try and do their best to represent their responsibilities on the Trails and Landscape Committee. And I think TLC, which is tender loving care, is very appropriate for what they're doing for our city on that committee. And lastly, I had a meeting on April sixteenth with the hazardous Materials Commission's, Am Bunson, Michael Kent, and the council member Carlson from Pleasant Hill. And we talked about my position now in the Policy Committee in that, in that role. I had several conversations with many constituents. A couple of people have asked me about the concept of COVID pay. That's something that has never come to us as a city. We've never voted on it. We've never talked about it. Right? I had let them know that there is going to be a pot of money that is going to be coming to the city through the American Recovery Act and that we'll have a chance to let the staff figure out how we can use those funds to help small businesses that may be affected in, in COVID. Over the past year, we, that's one of my priorities is to be able to support small businesses in our town. That's the end of my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, and my report, first of all, I just wanted to make note that the, the ground floor of floor square, as we all know, has been rented. It's been rented for quite some time. Unfortunately, with COVID, the business hasn't been able to get off the ground. It is starting to get off the ground now. So we will invite the, the owner of that business to come and talk about it when she's ready to do so. But very excited to have that ground floor rented there. And we're going to get a great new business out of it. So it'd be great. I met with, with Vice Mayor Cloven. I've met with several times with our city manager and, and of course, with various citizens around and did quite a bit of email back and forth over the last two weeks. The, I, I got a chance to, to attend and speak at the Anti-Hate, Stop the Hate Rally in the Park in The Grove. And it was an honor to be able to, to speak there. And also, I wrote the article for The Pioneer, and in it, I talked once again about SB nine, SB ten. These bills are very controversial and are going to affect us a great deal. And to that end, I, I attended the webinar for Livable California, which is another fringe group, if you will, that has an opinion about SB nine, SB ten, and several other bills. And I wanted to get a wider range of ideas on how they're going about fighting the state in quotation marks. The one thing that I, I did note from the very long process of going through that webinar was that we are such a small city that we're barely a blip on the radar when it comes to solutions. There's a lot of talk about fighting the state. There's a lot of talk about how to go about these housing bills. But there, there are almost no solutions for a city of our size. When you get down to it, you know, we talk about a Pleasanton or a Concord. They have plenty of, of ideas and solutions for that. But when you get down to, to us, a bedroom community that wants to stay a bedroom community and entertain local control as we have it, very few and far between when it comes to ideas. I, I'm going to be reaching out to Vice Mayor Testa in Pleasanton, who spoke at the, at the webinar. She also has another group. I want to talk to her about that as well, to see what it is that we can do, banding together with other cities. But moreover, I think we need some creative ideas as a council to make our voices more amplified in some way. And that is something I'm, I'm going to talk with Rain about. We had a brief conversation about entertaining some ideas that we need to bring back to you to try to be a little bit more creative when it comes to Clayton standing up for itself when it needs to stand up for itself. And whether or not we can actually have an amplified voice enough to make some difference for ourselves. We're going to continue to band with other cities and other things like the League of California Cities. But that being said, we still, we still need to work on on solutions for ourselves. So we'll be bringing that back to you. So that is my report. Okay, we'll move on to public comments on non-agenda items. If you would like to speak, you can raise your hand. We'll put you in the queue and you'll have three minutes to speak on anything that is not on tonight's agenda. And so I guess, Raina, are you going to be in charge as Janet back to?
Actually, Mayor Wolf, I am back. And at this point, oh, I'm sorry. I do not show anybody with their hands raised. Oh, now I have, I do have a hand raised. Jonathan, I'm going to promote you to panelist if you can please unmute your microphone.
Yeah, hello. I'm Jonathan. I wanted to share, I have two things. One is to share the Contra Costa County Report on Anti-Asian Violence from the Stop the Hate reporting webpage. Since the end of February of twenty twenty-one, we have forty-eight total reported cases. We are sure that this is under-reported. I myself have not reported my own experience. But of the forty-eight cases, fifty-two are verbal harassment, fifty-two percent are verbal harassment, ten point three percent are avoidance, eight point six percent fiscal assaults, thirteen point eight percent are other, five point two percent Asian-Americans have been coughed on, three point four percent are harassment online, one point seven percent harassment that impacts business, like calling in orders to go and then not picking it up, which is horrible during this time for Asian-American restaurants, and one point seven percent vandalism. Seventy percent of this, of, of the assaults and instances are, are on women. And nationally, at this moment, there are well over four thousand cases reported. As someone who has struggled. As someone who has struggled with, um, racist microaggression and harassment by a neighbor for months, the culminated and ugly despair of white race, of a white racist yelling white power, I organized a Stop the Hate Rally in Clayton to bring attention to the issue and unite the community together to stop hate. Unfortunately, Councilmember Jeff Wan's supporters on Saturday, April 10th, 2021, the morning of the rally, plastered an altered poster that claimed the rally was related to his failed bid to become mayor and that that is an example of anti-Asian hate. They even went as far as posting it on Nextdoor. I immediately called upon Councilmember Jeff Wan to condemn and denounce their action, but he has refused. This is not doing the right thing. Council Number One, please tell your supporters to stop intimating that you lost your bid to become mayor due to your race. After watching the December 1st, 2020 City Council Meeting and the election of mayor, I saw no irregularity. Your supporters are not taking anti-Asian hate seriously while hundreds and thousands of innocent Asian American live in terror. And worse yet, thousands are harassed, some severely beaten and heartbreakingly, some died, murdered. Your continued refusal to do, you, you, your continued refusal is doing great harm to our community. Instead of seeing efforts to stop the hate, stopping, uh, of stopping anti-Asian hate as a unifying collective endeavor to address a serious issue impacting every Asian American, your supporter view it as a divisive political, um, act. This is wrong. Councilmember One. All right.
Okay, Jonathan, I think your time is up there. I didn't actually see the timer, but I heard the
I didn't see it either.
Yeah, the, uh, timer went off. So, uh, we thank you for your, for your comments and for joining us this evening.
I'll finish it next time. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else? I'm sorry, my light's so bad.
Mayor Wolf, our, our next speaker is Rebecca. Rebecca, I'm going to promote you to panelist as I promote you. If you can please unmute your microphone.
Can you hear me?
We can. Hi Rebecca.
Hi. Um, thank you, council members, and good evening. On Saturday, April 10th, I had the pleasure of attending the Stop the Hate Rally in the Grove Park downtown. Jonathan Lee, who just spoke, did a fantastic job organizing the event on such short notice. The speakers all gave very emotional and thought-provoking speeches. Even young Owen made me both laugh and cry. It saddens and angers me that this rally was needed at all and that some people in our town don't feel safe and have been threatened with white power fist signs and threats of calling the good old boys, among other things. It saddened me even more that this event did not have more attendance and that it was hijacked by another local citizen or a group of citizens uh, for unrelated political purposes. These citizens continue to spew hate and lies because they are not happy with how the system works and that it did not work in their favor. To the best of my knowledge, this citizen and his bullish tactics, or their bullish tactics, have not yet been denounced by the very council member whose name was used to promote those lies. Jeff Wan, I am pleading with you to please stop letting them do this. This was not a political event. It was a rally promoting peace, friendship, education and love, not politics. I can't for the life of me think why the city council members would not have been in 100% agreement that peace and stability are needed. Even if you couldn't be there in person, a typed message could have been read as it was by other officials. I ask that all city council members call for not only an end to racism, but also for a beginning to civility. The fact that there were police cars on every side of the park for our protection was both welcoming and frightening. Welcomed for the security that they offered, frightened because of the necessity of it. We don't have to all agree on politics, religion, sexual orientations, or how many signs to have in your yard. But to make someone feel unsafe in their own home because you don't like them is never, I repeat, never okay. It is never okay to harass someone on their property, on the sidewalk, in the street or anywhere. We are better than that. I have seen this community come together on multiple occasions to support families in need. From a little girl with a terminal illness to families that have lost loved ones unexpectedly and to very sad, for very sad reasons. Most recently, a little boy that due to COVID restrictions had had enough and went on a walkabout that got hundreds of people searching for him. That is the Clayton that I love and I know, and I will strive to uphold it. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Rebecca. And, uh, do we have anybody else in the lineup?
Mayor Wolf, I have Scott. Scott, I'm going to promote you to panelist if you can please unmute your microphone.
I'm sorry, Scott, your time's up.
Hey guys, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. So, uh, those of you who, uh, know me the best know I'm, uh, all about love, peace, happiness, all that good stuff. Love our mountain. I love our butterflies, the birds and wallflowers that sit upon it. Love running the trails in downtown Clayton. Love skips, eggs, morass seeds, laveranda, grove side and so many other local establishments. I love volunteering downtown. Love the CBCA. Absolutely love Bocchi, and I just love so much about this town. So I got to tell you people, it really breaks my heart to say that there's a real cancer in this town and the name of that cancer is Safe Clayton. Over the course of recent years, Safe Clayton has done its part to sow division in this town. And all I ever hear from residents when I talk to them is how people want more kindness and harmony and balance, integrity, honesty, just neighborly behaviors and all, you know, all the things that really make Clayton Clayton. So Safe Clayton not only runs antithetical to what I hear from so many residents, from so many different viewpoints, but it also runs against the very ideals that set upon our signs on Clayton Road, talking about honesty, integrity and courage. So here's the thing that a lot of people don't know about Safe Clayton. Current City Councilmember Jeff Wan is not only behind Safe Clayton, but is likely a founding member. All of this will come to light over time, but essentially Jeff has been using Safe Clayton to promote hate and division within, within our community while keeping enough distance to keep his hands clean while they promote his agenda. Well, no longer, Jeff. You may have thought that your digital footprint was covered. Let me be very clear about this. It was not. There's very clear evidence that your candidacy and Safe Clayton are directly tied and that you were in fact a silent mouthpiece behind all of the division that they are spreading. Clayton residents Jonathan Lee, who you just heard from, and Mark Quaidie, and several others, including Rebecca, who you also just heard from, have asked you to denounce the actions and the words of Safe Clayton, Jeff. You continually refuse to do so. Why is this? Is it because they paid for your political ads, which they did? Is it because you actually support their message of division? Or is it because you're their silent mouthpiece? Either way, Clayton residents deserve to know why you refuse to denounce hate in your own community, Jeff. There's certainly no courage in those actions. And you're failing to do the right thing in that regard. So how about honesty, Jeff? You've claimed all along that you're not part of Safe Clayton, yet you're actually a founding force behind the effort. More importantly, we're talking about honesty and because of this, you're currently lying to every single member of this community, Jeff. But it's not too late. Stand up and tell the truth before the truth is revealed. Finally, let's talk about integrity, Jeff. Where's the integrity in hiding behind a hateful mouthpiece and pretending that you're not a part of it? Where's the integrity in refusing to denounce hate in your own community, Jeff? You're failing to do the right thing in every regard, and it's especially disappointing coming from a community leader. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Scott. And, uh, Janet, do we have anybody else?
Mayor Wolf, at this time, I do not have any other hands raised.
Hey, and we will close the public comment and, uh, move on. Uh, item number eight, public hearings, we did, did not have any. Uh, item number nine, action items, A, the City Council adoption by minute order council priority areas for fiscal year 2021, 22, and our city manager will take it from here.
Thank you very much, uh, Mayor, members of council, and just in the nick of time, since I got kicked off by, uh, my internet connection, which Councilmember Tillman is laughing because I was frozen about 400 times in a five-minute period this morning trying to have a conversation with her. So, uh, it continues, but hopefully not very much. So I'll be very brief with this item. Uh, what is before you is the updated list of items that were discussed by the council on March 22nd in your special meeting, uh, to discuss priorities for the upcoming budget year. Uh, so there were a couple of corrections and suggestions made during that meeting. Uh, the attachment shows the list of, uh, priority items that were identified in the areas of land use and housing, health, safety, financial stability, quality of life and good governance. So these, uh, assuming that they are adopted, then will be a document that we can put on our website and, uh, use as a reference as we both go through the budget process and as we look at individual projects and programs over the course of the next, uh, fiscal year and a little bit more, since we're not quite yet to the beginning of FY 22. Um, next steps, if there is, um, more specific, uh, dialogue that is uh, desired, um, in addition to using them to, uh, structure some of the conversation during the budget process is whether there's any internal prioritization within this list that's desired by, um, the, the council members, uh, and also then, uh, once we get into next fiscal year, looking at some sort of reporting process to ensure that the council receives regular information in terms of, uh, our progress on those items. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Raina. Does anybody have any questions for Raina? Counsel? Yes, Councilmember Tillman.
Well, if, once we prioritize, prioritize this, at what point or when or how can we add additional things? And I can give you an example if you need one. Not as a, not as a goal, but I think it just falls underneath the good governance piece, for example. Um, um, so if I'm looking at the, the council guidelines that we have and updating those, is that something that would fall underneath this under good governance?
Um, I, I think it could, and, um, really it is at any time that, um, something that, for example, gets brought up at the end of a council meeting and it gets asked to bring back. It, it would be, I think, helpful and appropriate if the council member asking for it could tie it to one of these and say, you know, this is an item that's under there so that any further conversation is, is already somewhat framed. And if it were, for example, somehow something that you couldn't really tie to something in the list, maybe that's a, um, you know, that's a, that's a piece of information, um, about how that might or might not fit in, in the current, uh, work plan, if you will. So, um, I, I think, you know, as with anything else, as, as items are asked for and we are able to bring those back, I think we can do that now in the context of, of these, um, priorities, whether that ultimately involves formal, um, uh, a formal amendment to them. I, I don't know the answer to that. Yet we could determine that kind of as we get there.
No, I wasn't necessarily asking for an amendment. You answered my question, um, when you responded. I, I think going forward, if there's something that I think can tie to one of these, um, bullets, then I'll just outline that one. I ask for it to be brought on the future agenda item. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions for Raina? We'll open it up to, uh, any questions from the public.
Mayor Wolf, I do not have any hands raised from the public on this item.
Okay, and we'll close that public comment and bring it back to council. Um, so we need a, we need a motion on this. Obviously, it's an action item, so we need a, a motion on this, so. Anybody?
Move, Diaz.
First by Diaz. Do we have a second?
Tillman, a second.
Oh, that was close, Peter. Okay, Janet, if you would call a vote, please.
Sure, Councilmember Diaz.
Yes.
Councilmember Tillman.
Yes.
Councilmember Wan.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Cloven.
Yes.
Mayor Wolf.
Yes.
Thank you.
That passes. Okay, and then, uh, uh, 9B is adopt resolutions consenting to the inclusion of properties within the city of Clayton in the Golden State Financing Authority PACE programs and associate membership in Golden State Finance Authority. And again, back to our frozen city manager.
I'm frozen? No?
No, no, I'm kidding.
I'm like, no, no, I've had, I've had the worst two days of technology issues, so I'm going to forge ahead with that. Um, and I've also, um, brought into the room as a panelist Emily Ramey from Y Green, who I will ask to speak, um, briefly after I'm done with my presentation, just give you, and there she is. Give you a little more information, um, about Y Green, uh, and, um, so you have that as well. So you wonder why she's in the room. That's why she's in the room. So, um, a little over, uh, a decade ago, the legislature, the California State Legislature passed two pieces of state legislation to create new financing mechanisms for property owners to facilitate the installation of energy efficiency improvements and other green improvement projects typically. These financing mechanisms are generally referred to as PACE mechanisms or property assessed clean financing and allow owners to repay the financing through a voluntary assessment on their property taxes. And one of the characteristics of this is that unlike a traditional loan that is tied to the person, the PACE financing mechanisms are tied to the property. So it's a slightly different mechanism and a slightly different capital market than you get through a traditional bank lending process. Uh, in 2015, Clayton adopted three PACE programs, uh, for use primarily for residential projects for city property, uh, owners. At that point, Y Green wasn't really at a point ready to bring forward here in Clayton. Uh, and so it wasn't brought forward at that time. The city adopted the three programs and those have been in place ever since. Um, Y Green has now been offering PACE financing, uh, for many years and in particular, uh, is focused on and has expertise in commercial projects, um, unlike some of the other programs that are really focused on residential. To add Y Green, uh, as a PACE provider for, uh, City of Clayton property owners, and in our case, we're talking about commercial property owners, the process is similar to what the city has, uh, been through before, which is to say that the city would be agreeing to join an existing joint powers authority, a financing authority, the Golden State, uh, Financing Authority. Uh, and, uh, there are no costs to the city for this. Um, there are no other, uh, associated requirements. Uh, but, uh, joining the financing authority does allow access for our commercial property owners to this, this financing, um, source. There are two resolutions associated with this. They look very, very similar. Um, but they are, uh, one for each of the two pieces of state legislation that I mentioned. So AB 811 was the, um, uh, one of the pieces of legislation and SB, uh, 555 was the other piece of legislation. They have very minor differences. Um, Y Green has asked, um, and I think it's wise for us to, um, join under both of the programs. That way, if, uh, the markets shift or other, um, uh, circumstances shift and one of the financing programs turns out to be a better match than the other, uh, those are already in place, uh, and Y Green has access to both of those options for, uh, commercial property owners within, within the city. Um, as I mentioned, there is no cost or other requirement for the city. In addition, um, uh, Y Green has agreed to provide additional potential protection for the city, um, that shouldn't be needed, but just in case. Um, the third resolution approves an agreement with, uh, Y Green to provide additional insurance and indemnification language, further ensuring that the city is shielded from, uh, any potential, um, liabilities that would, um, uh, come down the line. So that's the three resolutions that are before you two for the two financing mechanisms through the Joint Powers Authority and then the third for the, um, the, uh,
City Council meeting.
I think, uh, you need to mute, sir.
Sorry about that. Done.
Okay, thank you.
I, I muted. Um, so, uh, so, um, anyway, with that, uh, I will turn it over now to, uh, Emily Ramey from Y Green. And Emily, do you need me to share the slides or are you able to share your screen?
I think I'm able to share the screen, screen, and for any confusion, I believe the gentleman that's on as Emily Ramey is one of our speakers, a local Clayton, uh, property owner or contractor about the, uh, um, country club project. So I forwarded the login details that was sent to me by the city clerk, and I think that's why. So just, I don't have a look-alike here. Uh, I, uh,
Not fraternal twins.
Right, right. I'm just going to share my screen and, uh, I will I'm just gonna share my screen and uh I will uh just double check that everyone can see it. Um, I have done that now. Can everyone see?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. You need to fill the screen. You still see the preview on the left.
Yes, I'm changing this to slideshow now. Um, from the beginning here, from beginning, and here we go. Oh, whoops. Now that may have gone to a different screen. Um, so I'm sorry here. Let me just move this over. Um, I don't know how to show my screen. Hang on, sorry. I I'm just gonna proceed and hopefully you guys can see this okay. Um, uh, I don't want to take up too much more time. So um I am representing Y Green Energy Fund. We are a leading PACE finance company. Um, been around for over a decade and have made a significant impact in the uh PACE market uh nationwide. We operate in three states and California is um our largest market for commercial PACE. Um, this is a slide. We call it our infographic and it shows uh the impact to date of our projects uh nationwide. And so it gives you a sense of the reduction targets that are achieved through uh projects financed through PACE. So this includes both residential and commercial projects. Um, we do a significant amount of residential business as well as significant amount of commercial business, and this is the overall combined nationwide impact. Pretty sizable, pretty significant, uh lots of great reductions for local cities and counties throughout all of our active markets in California, Florida, and Missouri. And uh makes this a tremendous impact in terms of pu- public policy goals. And I heard uh some comments about unfunded mandates earlier. And you betcha, uh cities uh and counties are always strapped with unfunded mandates, really no matter uh market, what market you're in. And so PACE is an incredible uh policy tool for um enabling a way for local communities to meet unfunded mandates, right? Because your budgets don't allow for that, and this is all reliant on uh private equity. And so uh that is uh made available through no uh taxpayer dollars. And so important to note, and I think it's worth bringing up um that impact. Uh, next slide here is about our commercial program. Um, I don't know why this says, there we go. Uh, we are the largest PACE provider uh in the nation in that uh we have financed more projects, commercial projects than any other PACE uh company combined. Uh, we specialize in large and small projects. In fact, we are the only PACE, commercial PACE provider that uh provides financing for small and midsize customers. Uh, most of our competitors serve projects that are well over a million dollars, and they generally don't look or offer access to financing for projects under about the eight hundred and more, like five hundred thousand dollar uh project value. And so you can think about your small community and your small downtown districts throughout much of the state. Um, that leaves out a a big part of the community, right? A big part of what I like to call Main Street. And so Y Green is unique in that sense in that we really help serve the small, mid-sized business customer market. Those customers generally don't have access to other financing either offered by banks. And so particularly important that we bring that that resource to them. Um, we offer all types of uh, we do financing on all types of properties, uh so small retail, nonprofits, multifamily, large office, et cetera. Um, also special use organizations. Uh, you'll hear from uh one of those tonight that's joined us. Um, retroactive financing is a great tool as well. It allows access to capital from projects recently completed. So it allows, especially in these tough economic times, access to capital uh for property owners who have completed PACE eligible projects. Um, and so uh the solar storage, uh HVAC roofing, lighting, water conservation, et cetera, those are kind of our um our biggest ticket items in terms of the ones that most property owners in California take advantage of. Very interesting, uh very recently, the fire prevention measures were adopted under PACE legislation. Um, and just before that seismic retrofitting as well. And so the PACE uh legislation that was passed was really there to enable uh property owners to make these important uh resiliency upgrades. And they keep expanding the envelope of of what is uh financeable. And that's really exciting in light of the last year being the the worst fire year in in California history, uh fire prevention. And what that means for businesses, just so you know how to bring it home, most of the communities aren't truly threatened by fire risk as much as they're threatened by these PSPS power shut-off events, uh without warning and without knowing how long those will last. Small businesses that aren't equipped with um generators or solar or storage are really left in a bind uh because they want to be able to continue to keep the doors open and the lights on. And so PACE is a great way to buffer themselves against those inevitable PSPS events that are basically in our indefinite future. And lastly, our affiliate member program uh helps to um motivate partners in the community, commercial real estate brokers, developers, um uh engineers, et cetera, that are looking to find uh financing solutions where there's a financing gap in the projects they're doing for commercial projects. And our affiliate member program works with those um entities to incentivize them to bring us those projects so that we can see if they're financeable. And then they get a referral uh for that. So lots of different things going on with our commercial program. Lastly, just wanted to talk about the communities that have already approved Y Green's leading program. Uh, in Contra Costa alone, I've listed here all of the communities uh that have had our program, both our residential and our commercial program operating for many, many years. Uh, and so just thought that might provide a bit of comfort um and uh uh relatability to members of Clayton City Council and thinking about approving our program tonight. Uh, happy to answer questions. I'm gonna stop sharing my screen. Um, and uh thank you for your time.
Thank you, Emily. Uh, Raina, did you have anything else?
Uh, so just um in closing, if there are any um questions, uh obviously uh myself and Emily are here. I I, because I couldn't tell which of the many Emily Ramys was the right one, I just let them all in the room. So you have at least one hand up of an Emily Ramey who's, and there's the Emily Ramey, who will be your public comment when you all get to public comment. So um just wanted to confirm that for you in case.
Sorry for that confusion. I I forwarded that to my my colleagues here and um and uh. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay.
Uh, do we have any questions of Emily or Raina or are any of the Emilys? Yes, Councilmember Tillman.
I just have a brief question that hopefully you can answer. Um, in doing some research um outside what was in the packet, I noticed there's quite a few lawsuits that have been filed against Y Green. Can you tell us about those?
Uh, I can speak generally. I cannot speak specifically to active litigation. Um, I will tell you that the articles that were shared recently, um it's extremely unfortunate to hear about these very, very um isolated cases of uh customer dissatisfaction and/or contractor misconduct. Um, in some of those cases, Y Green was referenced as part of the problem. Uh, we are actively engaged in addressing those issues and working for a resolution for those uh consumers. Um, one thing to keep in mind is we're not new to to um industry opponents. Um, having been around for over ten years, that's not the first set of articles we've seen around PACE um in general and even Y Green. Um, what tends to happen, which is not a surprise from media, and this is not in any way to discount the claims of those specific customers in the article or other customers that may have had a similar situation. Uh, in no way am I uh marginalizing what they are saying. But unfortunately, some of those media outlets and even reporters tend to offer extremely unbalanced stories and unbalanced perspectives in getting the facts and providing data to substantiate the completed projects that we have um in our portfolio. I actually sent an email to council. You may not have had time to read it in advance of our discussion tonight. But it talks about uh the ninety-seven thousand completed projects uh that have uh we financed. And one important mechanism of those completed projects is that we're never able to release funds uh for projects unless the customer signs a satisfaction certificate that the project's been completed to their liking. Um, that's just one of many consumer protections that's built into our program and has been for years. There's also a very, very robust set of uh regulations now in place for the PACE industry. We are one of five licensed PACE providers. And as a residential licensed PACE providers, provider, we're beholden to a set of uh consumer protections and contractor controls that is far superior uh to any other financing mechanism uh available to property owners making home improvement or commercial property upgrades. So uh in general, it's unfortunate that some of these media outlets and these reporters have taken a liking to, and again, not uncommon, uh sensationalizing reports and um playing on the emotional uh triggers um captured in some of those quotes from the customers. Again, I am not marginalizing or discounting the claims made in those articles. But I do have to ask you to take an objective view of looking at our numbers, looking at the projects completed to date and the incredible impact we've made for meeting public policy goals for cities and counties across the state and the nation and really take a balanced and fair opinion of the company.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Vice Mayor Cloven.
Other than Oakhurst, are there other properties, uh either commercial or governmental, that we're, you're looking at being involved with in Clayton?
Well, you know, one condition of PACE is that they have to pay a property tax bill in order to qualify. So unfortunately, government buildings are not uh in our portfolio, but there are a few other commercial properties interested in the program. I can't disclose the names um or the types of properties, but uh there are a few. Um, and certainly there are uh lots of, there's lots of interest in the surrounding communities where we've been active for many years. Um, but I think with the um with the hopeful approval of the program, you know, we handle all of the marketing and the outreach and engagement from the community sort of in our turnkey operations. And so we're very confident that we'll be able to get an uptick in interest in the program from your local business community right away.
Peter, you good?
Good.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, well, I know we have uh Emily's hand raised. So I guess we'll go to public comment and and take Emily's uh comment.
Um, oh, hello. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, Emily.
Hi. Um, my name's Brian Walton. I am actually a Clayton resident. I've been a resident of the this part of the East Bay for for pretty much my whole life. I actually worked for Planet Sierra Solar, um the company who is helping out on the Oakhurst project. And so I just wanted to say that um kind of to uh Ms. Tillman's point, uh having been in banking and worked in this area for twenty years and small business up to commercial, doing a lot of loans and whatnot, um, we did go through um our due diligence. Um, uh, as far as who we wanted to work with for this project, um, you know, we quote-unquote interviewed uh a few different companies and whatnot, and we landed with Y Green just because of what we thought um their integrity and ethical ethical behavior um aligned with what kind of work we want to do in this area. Um, you know, our company's been based in California and then even a little north, but Northern California for over forty years. And so uh having, being a local boy myself here, I, you know, looking forward to helping the Clayton community um grow in in this capacity and go green. Um, and so I just want to uh, you know, kind of give my recommendation for approval for them, so.
Thank you, Brian. Appreciate that. Uh, I don't think we have anybody else, but I'll check with Janet.
Mayor Wolf, I don't have any other hands raised on this item.
Okay, then we'll close the public comment, bring it back to council. And uh any questions or a motion? Not emotion, but a motion.
Move, Diaz.
First by Diaz. Do we have a second?
A second.
A second by one. And Janet, please call the vote.
Councilmember Diaz.
Yes.
Councilmember Tillman.
Yes.
Councilmember Juan.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Cloven.
Yes.
Mayor Wolf.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes unanimously. And um now, thank you. Thank you, Emily, all of you for being with us. I appreciate that. Uh, we're going to recess the city council meeting at this point and will return after the uh Oakhurst Geological Hazard Abatement District meeting. Uh, so we'll turn this over now uh and recess and go over to Chairperson Tillman to take over the jihad meeting.
Great. Um, I'd like to call to order the April twentieth, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one Oakhurst Geological Hazard Abatement District uh meeting. And first order of business, item number one is um, well, call to order and roll call, Janet, if you wouldn't mind doing that.
Sure. Board Member Diaz.
Yes.
Board Number Juan.
Here.
Board Member Wolf.
Here.
Vice Chair Cloven.
Here.
Chair Tillman.
Here.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Janet. Um, item number two is public comments. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak this evening?
Chair Tillman, at this time, I do not have any hands raised on this item.
Great. Thank you. We'll move to item number three, which is a consent calendar, and we have two items. The first one, um three A is to approve the Board of Directors' minutes uh for its regular meeting on December first of twenty twenty. And does anybody have any edits to it? I do have a slight edit that I saw we might need to uh make. I don't know if um Board Member Juan wants to make it, but I was gonna do it on his behalf if he wasn't.
Uh, yeah, I think the minutes didn't reflect the request item at the end.
Right.
It's, and I will request the same thing this time. So that is number four. Doing a running count.
Yes. Um, so in particular, Janet, it is um listed in the minutes. You have it listed as, hold on one second. Let me get there.
I think, yeah. Uh, Chair Tillman, that the issue was that there were, it was not indicated that there were any uh district board members who made any requests at the end of the meeting. At the end of the meeting, uh district board member um Juan asked for a uh report on uh purpose in meetings and schedule, if I'm generally summarizing that correctly. Um, and uh so um one, we will add that to the minutes so that they are correctly um recorded, and we'll go back and get the exact language from the um video from that. And secondly, um just as an FYI, um, we will be, we will have um uh typically, uh, we have at least two meetings a year. One is um, well, three, one is the rotation, two is the um setting of the public hearing, and three is the actual public hearing regarding the levy. Uh, others maybe had um as needed, but um we will be coming soon to set the public hearing date, and then the public hearing date is anticipated to be June fifteenth, and we will address the uh issues around sort of um purpose meetings, et cetera, uh in the report that will come as part of that June fifteenth meeting.
Then can I get a motion to approve uh the minutes as amended?
Um.
A second.
So it was a.
Is that just for the minutes or is that also for the other consent item? And if it was, I just want to ask that I will introduce Bill Stracker um when we get to that.
Sorry, I had skipped B. Three B was the, are we doing a motion, Peter, on the entire thing?
The entire thing, including minutes as amended, correct?
Yes. And I I missed to second it.
I did.
Thank you, uh Board Member Wolf. Do we need to take a vote, Mala?
Yes, please.
Great. Janet, would you mind?
Sure. Board Member Diaz.
Oh, yes.
Board Number Juan.
Hi.
Board Member Wolf.
Yes.
Vice Chair Cloven.
Yes.
Chair Tillman.
Yes.
Thank you.
And then if I could just briefly, before we recess, recess back to the uh regular council meeting, um I do have as a panelist, um Bill Stracker, who is our new both city engineer and the um Oakhurst uh GAD uh general manager. And he was having some Zoom trouble, which seemed to be a theme this evening and was not able to um be on the meeting earlier. He is here now. Um, hopefully, Bill, if if you're not a figment of some Zoom imagination and you can hear me and you can turn on your camera, please do so and and wave hello. Otherwise, you all have at least seen his name and uh you will see him as uh city engineer and uh Oakhurst GAD general manager. Okay, moving on. Back to the regular meeting.
Bill.
Yes, welcome, Bill. Okay.
Thank you.
Great. Um, item number four was a public hearing. There were none. Item number five, action items, there were none. Um, number six, board items. Um, does anybody have any future agenda items you'd like to add? Okay, I don't see any. I will adjourn uh today's meeting of the, we're calling it the GAD now, uh April twentieth meeting at eight thirty PM.
Okay.
Return back to you, Mr. Wolf.
I'll take it back. Thank you very much. I'll take it back. Thank you very much. Okay, so we could, we'll reconvene the Clayton City Council meeting and move on now to council items limited to requests and directives for future meetings. Anybody have anything? No? Yes? Councilmember Tillman?
Yes, I have, I think I've got two only. Later in the summer, if we can, I know we talked about this a little bit, I would like to have a calendar of when the committee meetings are. For example, at the beginning of the meeting, we all talk about what meetings we attended, et cetera. It'd be nice for the public to know, one, whether or not those meetings are public and that they can attend them. As a council member, I'd also like to know which ones I can attend and how frequently they are and when they occur, especially since we do a rotation every December, and we rotate committees. It'd be nice to not have to go in blind. So if we can come up with a calendaring system so that we can post that, and all of us can be aware, that'd be great. And then secondly, I'd like to discuss removing Columbus Day from our cultural heritage proclamations, as that's already a national holiday that's already recognized. And those are my two items.
Okay. Bring those up down the road, and now anybody else? Okay, I will just reiterate that I'd like to have some creative dialogue with regard to SB 9, SB 10, and other bills that are gonna directly affect Clayton this year. And I'm gonna ask Raina to come back with, with something. I know we'll be talking in the next week or two on this as well, so. Anybody else? Yes, Ollie?
Sorry, I had jotted one more when you spoke earlier. You had mentioned that Forest Square, the ground floor, you were gonna invite that new tenant to come and speak. And I would just request that we invite all of the new businesses that opened up during COVID to come speak to all of us as well, since they didn't get that opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good idea.
Mayor, if I can just make sure that ground floor space, you're talking about the Hucklebees?
Yes.
They are not locating in Forest Square.
Pardon me?
They will not be located in Forest Square. They will be at Village Oak Shopping Center where Ed Mudville's grill is.
Okay.
They came in last week, changed locations.
Okay, I didn't hear that last part. What did you say?
They have changed locations.
They have changed locations. Well, that was, that's news to me. Well, thank you for bringing that up, but either way, we'll have a new business in town, and we'll have to keep searching for somebody to take over Forest Square. I will contact the owner and find out what happened there. All right, so that being that, I think, anybody else have anything? No? All right. So we'll close session. We don't have any, and that's it for our, for our meeting today. Our next scheduled meeting of the city council will be on May 4th via Zoom. Thank you. Stay safe. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Bye.